Good.
All right.
Apologize for that, everybody. First item is case number 1810. It's a rezon request continued from February 11th. A rezoned property from R2C to general business, 502 West Main. Ben?
Good evening. Ben Comer, 71 West Marion Street, Danville, representing the petitioner, excuse me, SNE Investments LLC. SNE bought the property at 502 West Main Street. This was the Hedges I-Care facility for many, many years, pushing 60 years. They bought the practice and they moved the business to a different part of town, out on West Main Street and Manor Drive. And so the property at 502 West Main is up for sale. Coincidentally, Hedges operated their business there under a use variance for nearly 60 years. And they got that in 1960. And so even though the building was mostly converted to business use and used for business for nearly 60 years, it's zoned residential. They're requesting a rezoning to the commercial district to allow businesses to occur there. They do recognize that perhaps maybe not every single business would be great to go in that particular space. And for that reason, they worked with Laura Parker on striking some objectionable uses to try to create a list that was good for everyone. This particular block of Main Street is interesting because we've got Hedges. And then to the immediate west, we've got a three-unit apartment building. And then to the west of that, we've got another commercial property. I can't remember the exact name of it, but it's like a One Choice Technology. There we go. So it is a bit of a unique block. And we think that this district fits well there based on those uses as well as the historical use. Staff is favorable. And we would ask for your support. We have a favorable recommendation to the town council. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Ben? This is a public meeting or a public hearing. I apologize. If anyone has any comments on this rezon, step forward and please say your name and address. Forward. No one? Close the public hearing. And we have three actions. A favorable recommendation for zoning request, favorable recommendation for zoning requests with written commitments, and unfavorable recommendation for zoning request.
I'll make a motion for a favorable zoning request.
Do we want to include the written commitments and the strikes from the general business district?
Yes. Recorded.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Jump in here, Cody.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes 4-0.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is another item continued from February 11th. Case number 1903, Leonard Homes. Preliminary plat approval for Kensington subdivision, East County Road 100 North, east of 300 East. Mr. Crits?
Yeah, Ty Reinhardt with Leonard Homes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. 9025 River Road, Indianapolis, Indiana. And with me tonight is Stu Huckleberry, who is also with Leonard, project manager, and Brett Huff, with Stepwell Engineering, representing our engineering company. We're here to request preliminary plat approval for Kensington.
See, you guys submitted a new layout just today. Is that correct?
Right down.
Yeah, 125 acres and 233 lots.
This the latest revision? Does that match our drainage map, Walt? Does that match the latest drainage map that we had? Okay.
I know that I see that you've made some commitments with Mr. Ellsbury on the property line. What's the status of that at this point? Has that been recorded?
Yes. Yep, there are commitments that will be putting a fence along. Actually, here's helpful. Actually, south of here. Fence will be going in. And we committed to do that seven months from the zoning being. So we plan on doing that. We've contracted for that. Materials on hand. We're talking to Mr. Ellsbury about perhaps working with us on a water easement. So we're working through that. But at the very least, we've committed to the fence and we'll commit to doing that at the very least.
Chief Morgan, is there any problems with cars getting fire trucks into the area?
No. You're confident that they meet all of our subdivision controls?
Any other questions? Forward.
Do we have any outstanding drainage issues, Walt? That we need to mention?
It's a difficult question. The delivery. They run into. Their drainage problem is that they will meet. They think. He are worth it. He get the. He get their thing. He get the. Is that they can meet it in time? They they keep. They eat. Based on the. I have to.
So Walt, as they develop this, if they do run into some drainage problems, what do we do at that point? Is that something where stormwater steps in?
They cannot meet.
Okay.
They absolutely cannot meet requirements. They come back to this board and they pay mercy. They're disowned.
Okay.
Hope it is. But they're fine with it. They are worth it. Still, they left.
Yeah.
If it comes down.
Okay. I'm banking that you've got enough resources. If you can build this, you can figure out how to make water go where it's supposed to go.
Yeah. And this is normal with the process and the plating. You know, we haven't done the full construction plan. So we can't give a definitive answer and never can at this stage. And if we don't meet, as Walt pointed out, if we don't meet your guidelines, we don't get construction plans approved. So we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Thank you. I like that reassurance.
Yeah.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. To open it up to the public, any questions about this development? And again, just state your name and address as you come forward. One for this one. We will close the public hearing on that. Oh, yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name, address.
Greg Huffaker, and I live at 721 North, 450 East. And we didn't get to see this picture. So I don't know what the latest update is. Is there still gonna, is there gonna be a road that comes out onto 450 East? Can we get a picture? Can we get a copy of this?
Here you go, sir.
Have my copy.
Have the board taken any consideration to the dangers of the hill? Just about two blocks north on 450? Of the traffic that that's gonna produce? And there's a real good chance of head-on collision because there's just not much.
Does that work?
There has been.
It goes back, goes back to the east and then on the south portion of 450?
It's before the curve, south.
South of the curve, the S curve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There it is. It's pretty hilly. And it's pretty dangerous. I mean, if somebody's over two feet, you cannot see oncoming, you know, traffic. I really can't make any sense out of this. I mean, but is it gonna be just one streak coming out of this addition onto 450?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Walt might be able to speak better about it.
That's correct, sir. No, it's right here. Right there. Yes, sir.
Change that map and the. It's a slight change. See? The dimensions of it. This is what.
Yeah, so they're not gonna put these retention ponds there. I just wanted to opinion on the dangers of that road.
I understand. I would, just on the face of it, I would say majority of people would probably go north to 100 when they come out of there. But I don't know that we have really any control over that part of the county road that doesn't join the subdivision, fortunately. Walt might be able to speak more to that, what we can, or even Lisa.
As far as can they be restricted? The idea, I think, is to be able to. Safety.
Yeah, yeah.
He provided a. This project. More than. People. For this project. Based on.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
60. I wrote 450 East. And I would like to speak to your comments.
There have been several accidents at the top of that hill because it's a severe drop-off. Two of them have been extremely severe. One car was hit so hard that its back wheels were in the crick at the bottom. It backed out of there. Because it over, they overwhelmed. So I would just like to point that out for your consideration that if the traffic level does increase. At one time, I think, a couple of years ago, Four Oaks was gonna put two outlets. 450. Now there's just one up there. But any large increase in traffic could cause a fatal accident. I'm not picking on you.
You know that. Studies. Film. Significant. Difference.
Yes. It all depends on what's significant. Or anything else.
Is that the speed limit on that road there? At the hill, is it 30 or is that 45? I don't know.
40. 40.
It may be something and that, since that's county, that you would want to send a note to the county commissioners and see if they could do anything on signage. That's outside of our town limits. That would probably be your best opportunity to have some influence on that.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Code 450. With regard to the drainage, my neighbor who's been related. We haven't seen the new plant here. But there were supposed to be two retention ponds. It was supposed to keep all the water over there. Is that still in effect? Is the cover gonna stay there? West. The creek. That cover's been stopped. Current commitment is water over there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Main Street. I'm just curious. When you say significant traffic, and I saw, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be a subdivision. How many homes are gonna be there?
Bottom there? I think it's 273.
273.
Okay. And so what is your definition of? Definition?
Yeah, the. It's the volume. No, I'm making sure we're all looking safe now.
In there. I guess my point is, you're building 273. We'll assume you have 273 vehicles at the least.
Really?
If on a corner.
They're actually.
But when you do these studies, a significant. There are, there is going to be more than there is now. What these gentlemen are saying. There's been several accidents. That really needs to be. Just the fact that there's more vehicles.
You're looking at. Moving in.
Into that.
Sheer. There be. What they're telling.
Any lives taken.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? None, we'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
So here. And as Walt pointed out, the traffic study said it may be necessary to put in a passing blister on the other side of the road. And so we agree in what we decided to do. That in the first section. Public safety issue. Do that. Now, that's based on availability of right-of-way. So it'd only be contingent on our ability to get the right-of-way. If it's not there, we can't offer to acquire that right-of-way.
Haven't heard that. That answers my question. I know he's not there. Put in a left turn line. Way on the south. They're controlled. There is another. To a left turn. My concern, since I haven't heard that. I was looking for. I thought the board should mandate. With your preliminary agreement and potentially. About the commitment. Hearing you make it. Commitment was solved. First section. Is there my problem?
Yeah, and the commitment is just contingent upon availability of right-of-way.
If he's not there.
It'll be on the south side.
We'll try to get right-of-way. If it's not there, because we'd prefer to put the passing.
Could you flip your map around and show the audience and just explain it to them?
Yeah. So the interest we're discussing is here. Public safety. So according to the public records, any existing. Not to be disgusting.
If there's not. There are ways to put. This is. Thank you. We have, we can. The. If the right-of-way.
Doing it all at one time.
Yeah, that clearly happened. If they have the right of.
Here's it's there. So that's what we hope.
We can work it out.
Yeah.
Very good.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
All right, so the public hearing, public hearing is closed. We have three actions we could take. For, I'm sorry. Yes, and in your... Okay. 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 Okay, very good. So, I would entertain a motion to grant a waiver of the subdivision control ordinance table 4.1, reducing the minimum centerline radius from three hundred and fifty, or three hundred feet to one hundred feet. I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty feet.
Mr. Vice President, I'll make a motion that we accept the waiver of the curve radii from three hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes four zero. Now, we have three actions we can take on the preliminary plat. We can approve the preliminary plat request, approve the preliminary plat request with conditions, or deny the preliminary plat request.
Walt, Walt, would you consider approval with conditions being the turn to the north? Would that be acceptable?
Do your letters cover the issues with the drainage as well? Okay, very good.
Mr. Vice President, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat request with conditions being the, the conditions mentioned in Walt Reader's letters.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much. The next item, the public hearing on rezoned property, again, this is from February eleventh. I have to pass the gavel to Mr. Nielsen. I'm actually a trustee at Danville Christian. So, as in previous meeting on this, I have to recuse myself.
All right. Sit back and go to the right. All right. Good evening. Thought I would get by without having to run a meeting, but apparently that's not going to happen. This is a public hearing request rezoned property located at nineteen twenty-eight Tenth Street and twenty-six seventeen West County Road one hundred north from residential one to a PUD. Arbor, is there anyone from Arbor Homes? Aye.
Good evening, my name is Paul Munoz. I'm the entitlement director for Arbor Homes. Here to present tonight on the Northwood Glen PUD. You have a... Just a little bit of background on Arbor Homes. We are the largest home builder in central Indiana. Been in business for over twenty-four years. So, we've weathered the storm of the downturn and come back. And the way we've done that is it's been pretty smart on where we choose to build. And we have a great management team that looks at that and takes a lot of things into consideration. We feel that Danville is a good opportunity for us, and we're really looking forward to potentially having a subdivision here in Danville. Built over fourteen thousand homes over the course of that time, since nineteen ninety-four when it originally started. And we do a lot of investments into the local community. We have a hometown heroes program, do a lot with Habitat for Humanity. And we also try to sponsor local organizations such as sports and civic leagues. So, a little due diligence on this process. We have met with staff on multiple occasions to kind of talk a little bit about the project and some of the needs within the community. And seen if there was an opportunity for us to be able to meet some of those needs. We did also meet with the Danville School Superintendent. And we did hold a, a neighborhood meeting to reach out to some of those in the surrounding areas. Pretty much everybody that we had to send local notice to for the public hearing. We also sent a letter and invited them to come talk and ask questions regarding the project prior to the actual public meeting. The Danville Strategic Plan and all of your zone ordinance is to try to see if this was a good opportunity. It was going to fit within what you were trying to accomplish. So, if you look at it there, we've got two separate maps. Excuse me, one of them showing a little bit further out. That shows where the property is located in, in proximity to Danville. And one that's a little bit closer that shows some of the surrounding uses. And it's, it's pretty much surrounded by residential on all three sides with agricultural to the north. Development overview, currently zoned R1. I believe it was just recently rezoned and annexed at the end of last year. We are proposing a PUD. Total project is approximately twenty-one acres, and we will be building single-family detached homes. Number of lots is going to be about sixty-six. And of that twenty-one acres, roughly about twenty-five percent of that is going to be open space. Little bit on the PUD, and this is just some of the basics, most frequently asked questions. I believe all of you guys have a copy of the full PUD, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Average lot size is going to be about seventy-nine hundred. Minimum lot width is going to be sixty, and our side yard setbacks are five-foot and ten-foot aggregate. Just to speak to that as a point of clarification, our normal product is forty-foot wide. So, on a sixty-foot lot, that normally gives you about ten-foot on each side. But what we like the opportunity to be able to do is to allow our buyers to have the most flexibility in choosing what they would like to build in the future. And so, with that extra side yards, that does give us the opportunity for two, four-foot and six-foot bumps, and also third car garages, which square footage is where most buyers seem to find their interest and value in a home. So, what you're going to find is that, on average, you're not going to see, well, take a step back. Third car garages is roughly only about twenty or thirty percent of our overall home sales. But, so what you're going to find is that you're not going to have every single home right at ten-foot apart. You're going to see that there's going to be a lot of variation between that. And it could end up being to where you would actually see twenty-foot in between homes. Provides a lot of opportunity for variation through the community, so it's not a set between every single home. Minimum square footage totals are twelve hundred for a single story and sixteen hundred for a two-story. Then we did, in the public meeting, we did hear some concerns, and this is just a couple of the ones that we wanted to kind of speak a little bit about. The drainage, we are working with a property owner to the west to acquire right-of-way. We already have an exhibit put together for that in a way that's going to be able to drain off of that property into a culvert. There may be some road improvements that have to be made right there at that culvert and an upsize on that. But, in general, you know, kind of what was stated in the previous project, we cannot have an adverse effect on the surrounding neighbors when it comes to drainage. So, right now, we're very preliminary. We have a pretty good idea of where we're going to take it and how it's going to get there and flows. Done a lot of calculations on that, and we feel that it's going to be able to handle with a little bit of improvements to take all of that sheet drainage that normally ponds and that they're seeing out there on those fields, be able to take that and put that into a pipe and a swell and get that away from the property in a timely manner, so it's not having an adverse effect on the neighbors. Some concern regarding the traffic at two hundred east and Main Street on the development. We hired an outside firm, A&amp;F, to take a look at that. They did a traffic memo, which I believe you guys have gotten a copy of. Do you guys see that? I have a couple of extra copies of it.
Sorry, I only brought two questions.
Yeah, I'll give you. Please, because we need one for the file.
So, once you get the opportunity to take a look at that, you'll see the traffic count again prior to the subdivision, the peak times at which it was counted. And you'll see that, once you have the new proposed subdivision, the counts that also go along with that with only having sixty-six lots. And it says that prior to and post full build-out of this development, that intersection will be an A rating for about ninety percent of the time. There's only two times when it goes down to, to a B rating. But those are limited to evening times and on certain turn radiuses. So, we feel that this, this subdivision is not going to have an adverse effect on the roads that are surrounding it. Did have some concern about the mailboxes that are across the street that will be in our entrance in XLD cell lanes. With that, we will make sure that we work with those homeowners to relocate those mailboxes and make sure that they get that taken care of in a timely manner. And then also, have you guys got a copy of the site plan? If not, I have extra copies of that. We will be meeting all of the requirements as far as, actually, you can kind of see where the drainage is headed on that one side. Are we going out the side of that to the west and making improvements to that area where all of that flows away from those properties? Around the exterior of the, of the property, we put together what we normally do on most subdivisions, and that is what they call a tree preservation area. We try to take all of the trees that are naturally surrounding this property. And if there's anything dead, dying, decaying, or evasive, we try to remove that. But we try to preserve as much of that as possible to create a natural barrier around that to some of the landowners in the area. We even have, in the past, and probably do that with this one if approved, work with the landowners to make sure that if they have anything that's right there on the fence that is on their side of the project that they would like to try to get rid of because it is dead, dying, or evasive, work with them to get that removed. We've got a crew out there doing it anyway, we might as well make sure that everybody's going to be safe. With that, you know, again, we feel this is a good opportunity for us to become a part of the Danville community, and we really look forward to working with you on this one. And appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions?
I have a couple. It's in regards to, you previously were requesting an R2, correct?
Correct.
And we went to a PUD. And I've looked through the PUD, the commitments and the, some of the setbacks and things like that. You're, you're, in an R2, the lot size was ten thousand. The seventy-five-foot lot width, a six-foot side, side yard setback, and a twenty-foot rear yard setback. Our sidewalks are four feet instead of five feet. So, I guess my question is, is how are you offsetting those lower standards than R2 in the development? I guess my question is really what it comes down to. Why would you think we would accept this when the R2 standards were higher than this when it comes to the subdivision control ordinance?
So, R2 would have been the underlying zoning. Even if that was the case, we still would have asked for a PUD. We would have come in under that designation. So, it just would have changed the underlying zoning that's responsible for that. I know you said in there that the, the sidewalks are five-foot instead of four-foot.
Well, you're, you're requesting four-foot sidewalks in the town. We do five-foot sidewalks.
Okay. Previously, I feel that we probably were looking at the ordinance and found four someplace in there. But if that's the case, we had no problem agreeing to a five-foot sidewalk as a commitment.
So, would you be willing to do some of these other things, come back with a different plan? And maybe... I, I think it's going to be hard to, you know, with these smaller lot sizes, you know, I think we're kind of stepping backwards a little bit with this PUD as it's written.
That's a good point. We have did a comparison with some of the others that were recently approved in the area. Our lots are bigger. Our homes are at or exceed some of the other current that were approved. Our side, our side yard setbacks are the same. We felt that with the added size in our lots in comparison with some of the other things that were already being approved within the community, that we were providing a different variation with, with it. Granted, it's five and ten, but as I stated earlier, not every home is going to be at that. Most of the time in other subdivisions, you'll find that that's going to be the same on every single lot. So, we feel that that's a little different in variation in comparison. And we feel that this is a good, good mix of what we've seen previously and a good opportunity for a little bit bigger lots and a little bit different homes. Did some price comparisons with some of the rest of them. We feel that we're going to be meeting or exceeding most of those that are comparable in the area. Be somewhere between the one seventy-five to twenty-five range for homes. And with that, the opportunity for the two-foot bumps, four-foot, six, and the third car garages is going to do nothing but help escalate that. Keeping that is a good opportunity to make sure that it's well-built homes, a good area, nice size, and going to fit within the community.
I do have a couple other things. I don't mean to be on a roll here, but I did go through your PUD pretty well. What about overhangs? Have twelve-inch overhangs. You're showing twelve inches overhangs on all the images that you're showing us on the elevations of the homes, but yet, when you look into the PUD, they don't have overhangs all the way around the house.
Are overhangs currently required in the R1 zoning? Are they?
No, they're not, overhangs aren't mentioned in R1 or R2, R3.
Okay. Normally, we, we start out with that. We feel that that's a good mix within the house to have a standard. If overhangs are something we feel is of vital importance to the community, we can look at trying to add something into this PUD that states that. What we normally would do is a twelve-foot, or excuse me.
Twelve inch?
Twelve inch. It's a big one. Twelve inch when it comes to butting up against siding and an eight-inch if it runs up against brick. So, that would be, I could put the language in here and commit to that if need be.
You know, just, just to be clear that when we, if we were to approve this zoning change, we're approving this PUD.
And you can...
Make sure we get this PUD correct, if that's our goal, before we approve the rezon. If that were to be the case. Okay, perfect. Thanks, Walt.
Any other questions? Anything else? Well, thank you. Anything else from the community? We're still in a public meeting, man.
Well, Mr. Vice President, there's the commission.
Damon, what do you do?
My name's Ola Miller, seventeen eighty, Tenth Street, Danville. And first off, I want to say that this is our sixth meeting that we've had on this particular development or property that are, that are here that's been to all those meetings. It's already ruled in favor of, or unfavorably against, you know, making... And obviously, PUD is a step. My wife and several other of the... It's nearly forty signatures. Just not signatures. Saw it out.
With that, we got a map.
It should come our way, but eventually it needs to go.
So, none of us are against developing as a whole. Just feel like our section of the community is a special area. A lot of us have more than two, three acres. Lot of four-wheeler traffic, dirt bikes, recreational outdoor activities that happen. We want to keep that area special. Our biggest reasoning for this. Of course, there's drainage concerns, of course, there's traffic concerns. All those things, you know, will... All those things, you know, will negatively affect us. What kind of traffic studies you guys see, that's normal. Arbor Homes, I can tell you right now, if you drive through Whisperwood, four cars sitting outside, have four drivers. Eighty percent of the properties that adjoin subject property signed our petition in favor of this being... A lot of people spoke about, you know, these being entry-level homes. Met with Arbor Homes, said with the common upgrades, entry-level homes can be about $205,000. Guys, but I know a first-year schoolteacher in the community, I can afford. Tell you that these lots are extremely small. You start taking advantage of the outs, adding on to them. Of me as a fireman, outs, extension from one house. Something to consider. So, just a point of clarification. Okay. So, my property is directly west, and it affects probably 95% of West Line. 16 of these properties on, as is, that'd be my new neighbors. So, about five feet from my new neighbors is the backside of a dirt bike course. Tell you right now that there's ten different kids out there, all from the community, utilize this. Not going to have very happy neighbors who drove dirt bike running 60 mile an hour. That's probably going to cause a little bit of a rift. Other thing that was mentioned, said that some neighborhoods have been improved. Westington. Oh, what neighborhoods? Yeah, those neighborhoods are east of us. Close to development. Don't feel like that area. So, we'd like your support by giving unfavorable recommendations.
Anyone else?
18th Street, I live directly south of the proposed property there. My question is, you guys just approved a large development just east of 200 there. So that traffic, half of it's going to be coming back. So did their traffic report include the additional traffic that's going to be on 10th Street from the new one that has already been approved? I don't think it did, you know. They, it's going to be much, much more traffic on there than what I believe that they're proposing is actually going to be. The other question I have for you is, and this is just a kind of selfish part of mine. The school corporation, can they handle an influx of 800, 1,000 kids? Because, I mean, we've got all these housing additions going in. So if we consider two kids per housing addition, you know, we could see 800 to 1,000 kids in the school corporation just like that. So, you know, are we going to be burdened with large tax bills in the future for having to build new schools and such?
You said you spoke with the school superintendent?
Once again, I mean, that's one development that we're talking about. There's been two approved between old 36th and 10th Street, just east of where we're at. So, I mean, easily be 800, 1,000 new students. And I can't believe that we're going to be, you know, able to absorb that much students in a very quick manner. It wouldn't end up being like Avon where we have so many residents and not enough businesses that it becomes a huge tax burden on residents. And I also feel the lack. Once again, personally, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Absolutely.
91 10th Street, I live on the corner, 200 and 100. And I, again, like my neighbors, I'm not really opposed to it. I'm opposed to the size of the lots. Because if you look at Whisperwood, all of those lots in there, at least a quarter acre lot, close to a quarter acre.
Which one is Whisperwood?
Right behind us.
Okay.
At the entrances, north entrance. And they were all like quarter acre lots. So we're talking about putting in a lot of little postage stamp sized lots, little houses. I think it's going to devalue the rest of our homes as far as size and things like that. And the other problem I have with it, it only shows one entrance and one entrance exit to that subdivision. I wasn't sure if there was going to be another one or not. So, all the traffic there is going to be dumping onto 10th Street. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Thomas Greman. I live at 1722 10th Street. I'd like to ask for your unfavorable recommendation for this plan. This, as Ola said, this is our sixth meeting that we've had on this issue. We're not here to tell the church what they can and cannot do with their property. But I think if you have this level of opposition to a plan, firstly, R2, and now the PUD, I think it should be really seriously considered to not allow this to go through. We are okay with the present zoning as an R1. We feel like they should be able to develop. But their plan of just stacking 66 houses on this small parcel of land, I think is going to really, it's not going to flow well with the community that's already there on the north side of 10th Street. And another thing, we just heard arguments for another subdivision of 277 houses. So, at some point, I think the town of Danville should consider kind of limiting what we can do as far as development in our town. Because we may be solely turning into Avon. I moved to Danville because I didn't want to be in Avon. I didn't want the tax increases because of the schools getting too big. Okay? So, again, I would like to ask for your unfavorable recommendation. It is currently zoned as an R1. I think that's fair. I think everyone surrounding this property thinks that's fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't be shy. I got all night. I don't have a dog enough fight for the NCAA championship. I'm already out of the pool. Take all night.
Tiffany McIntosh, I'm in 1949 10th Street. And I just want to make sure that we, we are told that there's been traffic studies, we've talked to the school. All that was done before the approval of this large one right now, less than two miles. So we need to make sure that we have a traffic that includes all of that traffic. The school needs to be able to give us their opinion based on all of their stuff. And most of us all agree that the larger lots is what drew us to that. When we get older and our kids are gone, we like not to be in a subdivision. To be in our larger lots. And putting that many houses on top is going to be a lot of young people, a lot of crazy drivers. I personally, I work from my home, and I stand at my desk that looks straight up to the street all day long. Straight into that neighborhood, and I see the traffic. It's already picked up since I've moved there two years ago. I think we also need to take time, possibly revisit it down the road, maybe after seeing the effect of the one that you've already approved. It's two miles down the road.
Thank you very much. Come on down.
My family and I are at 1094 North County Road 200 East, which is east side of those development. So, and my name is Brian, properties that the drainage issue occurs. And I know there's been discussions, and I know that Brian and I are on the same page if that time comes. I guess my, in my opinion, with this already going in front of this committee, and also then to the town council, it seems like there's been a precedence already been set by the town council. Not changing to the, I might get it wrong, changing to R2. It's R, is it R1 right now?
It's currently R1. They're looking at a PUD.
Right. So I know with the discussion from the R1 to the R2, the main topic of that meeting, discussion-wise, was, well, this allows an increase in the amount of homes on that piece of property. I don't remember the exact numbers, and I apologize for that, but it was very minute. I mean, we were talking, maybe the R1 allows two homes per acre, and the R2 four homes per acre. I might have those wrong. But when you look at this PUD, we're talking over 60 homes. Feel like, like I said, a precedence has already been set that we've denied an increase of that little bit, and then going to this PUD of a very large amount. So, and I know we can talk traffic and all those things, but like I said, I just feel like there has been kind of a precedence in place just specifically on the number of homes we're going to allow on this piece of property, whether it's R1, R2. That's all I have. Say my case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? I think I see one or two people that haven't stepped up to the mic yet. Just teasing. If you like it. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public meeting. Fellow commissioners, we have, we have a decision to make. We have three options, a favorable recommendation for rezoning request to a PUD. We have favorable recommendation for rezoning request with commitments, and an unfavorable recommendation for rezoning request. What is the pleasure of the commission? Interesting.
The petitioner's requested to know if he can provide rebuttal to the questions that have been provided.
Technically, I have closed the public meeting. So, but Walt, your thoughts?
I would like to hear the rebuttal.
Any other? Everybody okay with that?
Fine with it.
Okay, yes.
Still need to reopen the public.
And I'm reopening the public meeting. We'll get it right.
So, I'm just going to kind of go back through a couple of things that I heard. Know that there was some issue with it degrading values within the neighborhood or within the area. Again, we've looked at average sales over the last six months to a year for all the existing subdivisions that surround us and the homes. Our homes, on average, are going to be slightly above that. I know there was some concern about this being an entry-level home, and feeling that with the upgrades that we provide and the chances for the bumps and the third car garages that would price entry-level people out of this subdivision. You're going to see a sign that's probably going to be in the front. And again, I'm not on the sales side of it, so I can't give you an exact amount. But it'll probably say, starting in the 140s to 150s. Somebody really wanted to come in and buy a Bradford or buy a ranch home, they have the ability to do that at that price. What we're saying with the average is that if you look at what we currently have within the area, such as Plainfield, and some of the ones that surround us, and what we've done in cost comparisons, we feel that we're probably going to average somewhere in the 190s to 210 range because of some of the upgrades and what we're currently seeing with what people are purchasing. Again, the traffic study did not take into account the new subdivision. Although it had been proposed, it was not finalized yet. And we don't have the count on the number of lots and things of that in nature. So, the current ratings are in A across the board, except for the one time in the evenings when it would be a B. I, using my own knowledge of traffic studies and the things that I have seen with the ITE and some of those, I don't see that it's going to be an issue in the future. But again, I'm not a traffic engineer. So the fire issues, I know that that was kind of brought up as a fireman. He had some concerns regarding that. And if you look at what has already been approved within the other subdivisions, those are 50-foot wide lots and 52-foot wide lots with a five and a 10-foot side yard setback. So those homes are going to be a lot closer together, on average, than ours are because of the size of our lots being larger than those. Tax burden, of course, a lot of people know that commercials where you get your 2%, industrials where, or, excuse me, 3%. That's normally what people want to try to attract, but without the rooftops, a lot of times you can't get that commercial to come in. Feel that with the subdivision that's being proposed down the road with Kensington, and also with what we're proposing, it's a good opportunity that some other businesses will actually start taking into consideration some of the growth within the area and start looking here a little bit more seriously as to relocate. That being said, I appreciate your time, and very much.
Can I close it now, Walt? Okay. I don't want to go rebuttal after rebuttal after rebuttal. So that is closed, and still, before our council, our commission, we have to make a decision. Any motion on this body? Us? Absolutely.
So, I guess the one kind of thing I'm kind of struggling with is other things have been approved. This one's met with a lot of... Which these people are clearly concerned, rightfully so. But in my mind, if other stuff similar has been approved, what's different, or what is so different?
You want me to respond, or just?
Yeah, no, no, conversation.
No. I am sympathetic to the needs of our community. And being a school teacher, I do know what the effect of a lot of people in my classroom will be because my classes are anywhere between 28 and 35 darlings who are going to graduate in 35 days and can't get here quick enough, mostly for the staff, not the kids. Having said that, I do stand by my previous votes on this particular piece of property. I know that with the new additions, we've looked at over 500 new homes in the next couple of years. And I think that's quite a bit. So, obviously, there has to be a point in time where we say enough is enough. Saying that it should not be developed, I'm just saying that the density should be less. That's why I like the R1 rating, as I told you before previously.
R1 is two homes per acre, which could be up to 40 homes, though.
Exactly. And this is 66, 60-ish? And then the R2 was closer to 80?
Could be up to 80.
I'm all for the development. I just think it needs to be a little bit smaller. That's just my opinion on only one vote.
My biggest issue is with the architectural commitments.
My biggest issue is with the architectural commitments. Why they would rezone, you know, when they annex to an R2 and then go to a PUD, it's a lot of, to me, it's a lot of commitments. I believe this truly was an R2 subdivision. Move back from that R2.
Personally, I don't see as much problems with the lots. All your lots.
Yeah, most of my problem is with the architectural commitments and the way that house is going to look and how it's going to be built. When you see images of overhangs and you see brick on the face of the exterior, and then if you dig into the PUD, you see something that is maybe an out. Maybe they don't have to do that. They're showing that, but they're saying, you know, in the PUD that they don't have to do that.
Walt, want to answer that? The noise, the noise issue really isn't a factor when it comes to the number of houses. So, not to, not to cut you off abruptly, but we're really looking at the density at this point, okay? You might want to take it up with Arbor Homes if this gets approved. We're just looking, we're just looking at density tonight. Go ahead. Thank you. All right. Back to our action. Three actions. We've been down this road before. What's the pleasure of the commission? No one's going to say anything, then I'm going to make a motion to an unfavorable recommendation for rezoning request. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Further discussion. All right, roll call vote real quick. Mr. Sheets.
Yay.
Lofton.
Yay.
Yay, and I vote yay. Unfavorable recommendation for rezoning request is forwarded to the town council, a vote of 3-0. All right.
Before we move on.
Yes.
This moves to the town.
Yes. Seven o'clock on the 15th. And just fair warning, that's usually our long meeting when we have department heads, okay? Usually, requests like this are in the beginning. So, we won't tie you up all night, but let you know, sometimes they can run a little long. A long-winded people on that town council. Okay, I've turned it over to a regularly scheduled meeting.
We'll move on. I appreciate everyone coming in and expressing your thoughts on the last matter. On to new business, we have a public hearing to request a rezoned property located at 167 North Cross Street from R2 Central District to Industrial Light. Mr. Eglin?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good. Jeremy Eglin, 6781 East US Highway 36, Suite 220 in Avon. I'm also here with my client, Eric Woltz, the owner of ESWI Properties. I have paper copies of my presentation, if the commission would like them to look through.
We have, in our packets, we have drawings of.
You do, yes. I have slightly different material, but some of the same as well.
Okay, you're welcome.
Sure. Better safe than sorry. This is the.
We're struggling, we've had some technical difficulties at the beginning.
We were unable to achieve that.
Sorry.
Computers. Yes, absolutely.
That's a nice one.
It's been on that last week, actually.
So again, my name is Jeremy Eglin, I represent ESWI Properties. We're here to request your favorable recommendation for the rezone of 167 North Cross from residential to Central District to Industrial Light. ESWI Properties shares common ownership with Torek Engineering. Torek, or ESWI purchased 167 North Cross at the 2017 tax sale. ESWI also owns the property that Torek sits on at 150 West Clinton Street. So 150 West Clinton Street is immediately south of 167 North Cross. Torek's been in business since 2008, have been located here in Danville. They support municipalities and OEM manufacturers throughout Indiana and the Midwest with innovative water and wastewater control automation, integration solutions, and maintenance service. All the operations are held at 150 West Clinton Street, and actually, prior to commencing operations at 150 West Clinton Street, the property was similarly rezoned, basically an identical request in 2008 under petition 0808. Torek has outgrown their space. They need room to grow. If you go in there, the place where they load and offload is so tight, they can't turn around the forklift. You've got to drive out, unload, drive back in. On the next page, you'll see a diagram of where 167 North Cross is located. That's a beacon image, the parcel is highlighted in yellow. There used to be this nasty house there. That house had sat empty and abandoned, except for, I believe, a raccoon that didn't want to leave. The raccoon, however, was evicted, and the property, the house that was there, has been torn down. We have the understanding that the house had been used, had been vandalized, had been used for criminal activity in some cases, so it is a benefit to the community that it's no longer there. If you look, the building that's in white to the immediate south of 167 North Cross, that building with a white roof, that is Torek Engineering's current facility at 150 West Clinton. Torek would like to use the property as office and warehouse space, and if you go a couple pages, there's a very, very preliminary drawing of floor plan. We anticipate having two stories, offices above on the second floor, and some storage space down below. The loading dock would be moved from 150 West Clinton over to 167 North Cross. The traffic would not be increased, it would just be a matter of, instead of going to 150 West Clinton, the truck would offload at 167 North Cross. We're not talking about huge, heavy trucks, not semis unloading, but box trucks and something similar. It's not something that causes a lot of traffic. Next page is a, again, very preliminary, drawing of what the building might look like from the exterior. We want to keep a residential-looking structure. We want it to look as home-like as possible, so that it fits in with the surrounding area, with the surrounding houses, and in any case, will be a major upgrade from the raccoon house. We believe that the rezoning is in harmony with the comprehensive plan, preserves the exterior residential character as much as possible, is a more desirable use than the home that was in there, will maintain or increase property values with that home gone, and is a responsible development and growth of that district. Torek wants to continue to grow in Danville and contribute to its prosperity. We appreciate the support of staff. The petitioner is happy to commit to no wireless towers, that was one of the suggestions of staff, and we have absolutely no problem with that. We respectfully request a favorable recommendation to the county, town council. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We did receive one statement from an neighbor, John and Aaron Hughes, 152 North Jefferson, point about alleys being blocked. You say that your client would make sure that alleyway access would not be denied?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to give you a little background on that, when the demolition was being done on the house, there were, we believe, two days, maybe three, where the construction was not done in time, and there was blockage of that alleyway. That is not something that would be ongoing, absolutely, that alleyway is going to remain open. Torek's plans require that that alleyway remain open, because that's the loading access. So, that is absolutely something that we will continue to do. I actually, I wrote the letter writer back in January, immediately after this happened, and requested a meeting. I'm not sure if she got my letter, I didn't hear back. I wrote again in March, asking all of the neighboring landowners if they had any concerns. And I didn't receive anything, but Torek wants to work with whomever, we will not block the alleyway.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yes, sir, it was part of the packet. Yes, I did see that.
They also requested a landscape, landscaping barrier or berm at the southeast and east side.
Yeah, so we definitely intend to install a privacy fence. As far as a berm goes, we're really not certain how that might affect drainage. Presently, there's a slope on that property as it goes to the north. It's possible a berm there would disrupt the drainage of the area and actually cause more problems than it.
But you are planning on putting a fence in?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Now, would this, and Lisa, would you, would this, this doesn't fall under the town center?
Um.
Would this have to go through design review or anything?
No.
I didn't think so.
No.
That's just one block. Okay.
I think we missed that by about 50 yards.
Yeah, it's pretty, I'm on that, too. Pretty easy to negotiate with.
I believe this will require a site plan to address.
And drainage, yes. Yes, sir.
Now, will that need to come back before us when the final plan?
It's heard by the development. Design review. Sorry, design review.
It's all good. And if I could say, speak, house that they tore down was in such disrepair, we had instructed our firefighters not to entry unless there was a safety issue. Truly, truly a bad place.
Yeah. What it looked like driving by it.
Other questions?
This is a public hearing, I'll open it up to any comments or questions, audience, are you, are you here for that? No? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the public meeting. So, we have three possible actions, favorable recommendation for zoning request, favorable recommendation for zoning request with written commitments, or unfavorable recommendation for zoning request. entertain a motion.
I'll make a favorable motion, a motion for favorable, favorable recommendation for zoning request with the commitment for no wireless towers.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Eglin. All right. Next item, replat request to combine lots 54 and 55 in the Wexford subdivision, addressed as 1348 and 1352 Luther Glen Court. This is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, and I spoke to Coos Consulting today, and he said he would not be. This is basically having your packet, they're just erasing the lot line. Stating home. The owner is in the audience.
I don't think so. It's pretty straightforward, you just want to combine the lots. You just want to combine the lots, correct? And it's, sidewalks are already there? All right, okay.
There's no drainage, easy.
Anybody else have any questions?
Three, four, five lots, combine them all.
No, no, not that, Bruce, I have a plan.
Snap up the whole rest of the street there.
No, no, it's not that. I have hot rods and I need a garage for the hot rods. And the lot line for that second lot, they won't. And the lot, the lot line for that second lot, they won't let me cross it without combining the two. And we only crossed it by a few feet, but it crosses.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion to approve replating request or deny the replating request.
We'll make a motion to approve the replating request.
Motion?
Thank you.
Motion second, all in favor?
I didn't take you long.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, thanks for, thanks for sitting through the, please, one, apologize.
You first.
Been looking for all night.
Yeah, exactly. Got that right, thank you.